I'm exhausted with the administration's attitude. We make a decision, and that is final. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We definitely will take another consideration. Mr. Perrow?
He's right. It's emotional. A while back, we all got letters, all of emails. I'm a little shaken up right now, but I'll do the best that I can. A lot of it was about my daughter, whom about a week and a half ago, we made the decision.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
I'm Robert Perrow. I live in Rutland City. Everybody got an email based on the correspondence that we had with the middle school, and it seems to be a normal problem. It seems to be coming up a lot. I'm not going to bore you with the details of what happened to my daughter, because you've all got very detailed things that came to you. But a lot of people are saying the exact same thing. Their voices are unheard. Nobody's listening, and nobody's doing anything. We did what was right. Right here, I actually printed this out before I came in. I'll say this before I go on. After a report of bullying harassment, schools designated employees must begin an investigation within one school day after filing a complaint. Now, there was a complaint filed on January 14th. We never heard anything. Nothing happened. There was a complaint filed on 14th, the 18th, the 2nd, and the 3rd. All the same people doing the same thing, I got the same thing. Oh, well, I'm going to restore the circle. So, not knowing what a restored circle was, kind of had an idea. I said, "I'll let you do it. That's your job." Talked to my daughter repeatedly. No restored circle was ever put together. I got a call with Ms. Beaumont, and I said that if this continues, it's going to become physical. Students have become emboldened. That was left unanswered until it became physical. This is not the first time that this has happened. And as you know what happened to my daughter, how many of you know what happened to that little girl on the school bus? That was sent home to the same kids that were bullying her? They got dragged over the back of the seat of a bus and beaten on the bus so bad the bus driver had to stop them. Patty Beaumont told me, or my wife, actually, my wife called. I didn't realize how great the situation was until I actually looked at the tape myself. Nothing had been done. No intervention, no nothing. Parents have had it. We're paying almost $18,000 a student to send our kids to a school we can't even send them to. I pulled my daughter. She's in Christ of King right now. If it wasn't for my in-laws, she wouldn't even be there. She would still be facing this in that school every day. In a meeting with Beaumont and another person, we had asked them straight up. Talking back and forth, I looked over at my daughter, and I said, "My daughter's 14. How do you feel about this? This is your life, not mine." She started crying. "Why are you crying?" "I can't trust any adults. I've gone to all of them. They told me to ignore it. They told me to leave it alone. They told me that..." "It's just a one-time thing. It's not going to happen again." That's not even the worst of it. Then I found out there were other parents facing the same thing that I'm facing, but even worse. Another young lady got trapped in the school bathroom. One girl held the door while two girls beat her up in the bathroom. Nobody did a thing about it. I'm trying to keep my temper. I'm trying to keep level-headed. Everything is about policy. And every single policy that I have read from the state of Vermont and from Rutland Schools has been violated in all of these incidents, and nothing has happened because of it. We have one person contact us from the school board. One person. And their biggest concern was the fact that CRT was mentioned in one of the letters. Not that our daughter had been bullied, not that nothing had been done about it, but somebody mentioned CRT. You are asking us to send our children into a hornet's nest. If you are not going to... The only thing that we're asking, and I wouldn't even be here today if the administration was doing their job. I would not be in front of you. Your job is to set policy. Your job is not to listen to the complaints of the people. Your job is not to sit here and deal with the day-to-day stuff. Your job is to set policy that's supposed to be followed. When that policy's not followed, no matter where we turn, where else can we go? So for that, I will apologize to the board for having to sit in front of you today, four of us. But we're left no option. That poor girl that got beat up on the bus, the one that was blocked in the bathroom. And then the most recent thing that I heard that actually happened in the middle school... I'm not exactly sure all of the details behind it, but I do know for a fact that a teacher walked in on a boy that had a condom from the nurse's office, trying to have sex with the girl, whether it was before her consent or not, in the locker room. This is happening in the middle school, and the administration's doing nothing. Literally nothing. When I decided I was going to run for school board, and I didn't make it, so it really, that doesn't matter. I was called a lot of things. But one of the things that I will never apologize for is being called an activist. I was called a parental activist. And I will advocate for every single one of these kids, not just my daughter, but every other kid that's dealing with this stuff. This is not fair. I mean, would any of you that have children tolerate this if this was happening to your kid? I understand you can't answer. It was a rhetorical question. I know you wouldn't. The point that I'm trying to make is, we just passed a 61-point-whatever-million-dollar budget for this school district. And it passed. For the people that don't have kids in the school, give them their money's worth. For the people that do have kids in their school, provide some form of safety. I don't care if you have to create a council, or if you have to create some kind of oversight committee to look into these allegations, but if they're not being met at the school level, what in the world are we supposed to do as parents? I have to send my daughter to a school that I have to pay tuition for now. Don't get me wrong, it's a nice school and everything. But she was happy with her friends. She was happy at the school. And had the school done their job like they were supposed to? Some of the things that I was told, I said, "My daughter was called a racist." "Why was your daughter called a racist?" Every student has a Chromebook. On the back of her Chromebook, she had the same thing that we pledge allegiance to at the beginning of every meeting. She had the American flag. And on that, because my daughter actually has interest in becoming, God only knows why, a police officer, CSI investigator, to be exact, she had a back-to-blue on that. And I was told that kids are just calling each other racist now. And the exact words of the principal, I am not paraphrasing here, so please, do not take these as my words. I don't even like saying this. I was told by the principal, "Well, kids nowadays just call each other racist." It's kind of like back in the old days when you'd just say something was gay because you didn't like it. Those were the exact words spoken to me. That's problematic as far as I'm concerned. And when you start calling people racist that are not racist, how do you... Adults can't even decide who's racist. How are kids supposed to? When you change the description of what it is every time you turn around, you allow it to become an insult, and you know it's there, and you do nothing to stop it. There is real racism going on. But that's getting pushed to the back burner because of everything else. This means not... That's not to be used lightly. And the words of that principal were highly inappropriate, as far as I'm concerned. And the way that they've dealt with this, I know for a fact right now, there are five cases with the RCPD because of the middle school. I know there's numerous cases where people have actually called lawyers in Caligonia County to deal with the middle school. And the accumulation of everything that happened to my daughters because they decided they were going to call her racist, somebody called in a bomb threat and said my daughter had a bomb in her backpack. To which she was searched before we were even called. Unfortunately, Corporal Aldrew talked to me afterwards and said, "Your daughter composed herself very well and did a fantastic job as we went through her backpack." At some point, something's got to get here. Are we going to be proactive, or are we going to be reactive? Are we going to wait until somebody gets raped, murdered, or maimed? Or are we actually stepping in to do something about it? And I can guarantee you that there's a lot of parents sitting behind me right now that feel exactly the same way. And some of them are not fortunate enough to have a family that can help them out when it comes to putting their kid in a school to protect them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Student's report.
This month, RIS is focusing on flexibility and optimism for our character traits. It is always beneficial to stay positive and accepting when things have to change. This month, we have a different challenge for students each week. Last week, students were challenged with reading 222 books. By the end of the week, they had read 879 books, once again proving our students far exceed our expectations. This week is an estimation challenge, and coming up is an engineering challenge and a door decorating challenge. Northwest students are working on the character traits courage and perseverance this month, learning that even when you want to give up, it's important to try and try again. Northwest Cliff Year of the Book presentation this month was author and poet Roji Edens. Children focused on poetry and song throughout this inspiring presentation and enjoy a Cliff book giveaway to go along with this. Northeast, Northwest, and RIS also look forward to parent-teacher conferences coming up on March 17th and 18th. When parents and teachers work together as a team, children receive a clear message that learning is important, and this sets our children up for greater success. For the Northeast School Monthly Character Trait, we have been focusing on positive leadership. Students and staff are learning about how to be good leaders and practice being good examples of leaders for others. Last week, students and teachers at Northeast and Northwest celebrated Read Across America Week. This week celebrated reading in general, as well as books that represent a wide variety of cultures and the rich diversity in our world. Northeast School will be having many fun activities in March, including a Grow in the Dark Carnival, an author visit as a part of our Cliff Year of the Book grant, and a field trip to Spartan Arena for some soccer on the turf. Thank you.
Aleah Barnes, an eighth-grade student, recently started a Books and Cookies Club. They had their first meeting last week. It was a huge success and enjoyed by all. A group of students attended a Generation Global Dialogue and got to speak to students from the Philippines and India about women's rights. They are very excited to join another. Yesterday was the first day of our third trimester. With the end of the year comes with thoughts of high school for our eighth graders. This transition starts with high school registration, which is coming up. Counselors at both schools do a phenomenal job supporting our students and families through this process. We have three students here for our presentation tonight, if you have any questions. At Rollin High School, the RHS Guidance Department organized an online eighth-grade information night for families and individualized tours of the building. About 40 student families had individualized tours led by one or two members of the faculty and a student representative. Congratulations to Gabby Olson, who was invited to speak at Bernie Sanders Student Community Forum. She spoke eloquently on behalf of her students on the effects that the pandemic has had on the student body. The gym conference is scheduled for March 31st at RHS. This event is an opportunity for students to experience a conference-like day to learn more on a particular topic. This year's theme is Regenerating Civil Dialogue and Peace. And the keynote speaker is Drew Peterson, an RHS alum, who is working for the State Department. Some of the student capstone projects include the health benefits of crime, domestic violence, and social media, and global warming and human birth rates. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Questions of our student representatives? Thank you for answering my poll. Yes?
So, and I know it doesn't really pertain to you, Lauren, but Isabel, you were not a student rep during non-COVID, correct?
No.
Okay. So, thank you.
All right. All right. Thank you very much. We have recognition of the UVM LMO with RMS RHS Improvement Plan. So, Mr. West?
Doing fine. We have a middle school team that's stepping up right now.
Okay.
And I'm just broadcasting here. You have your packets. Might be some minor changes in the packet from the work they did today, but I'm sure Erica Wellstrom, Patty Beaumont, and Megan Marsh will introduce their team.
Thank you, Rob.
Chairperson Kavarkas and members of the school board, Mr. Olson and central office administrators, we thank you for providing us with the opportunity to update you on our annual progress on our continuous improvement plan, as well as the amazing efforts of our faculty, staff, and families to serve the Rutland Middle School students. I'd like to introduce Assistant Principal Megan Marsh and Director of Student Engagement, Erica Wellstrom, who will help me with tonight's presentation. They are both such integral members of our administrative team, and I appreciate their hard work and dedication to RMS every day. So we're going to begin our presentation, as you can see up on the screen, with a quote from a middle school classic, Diary of a Wimpy Kid. "It's true. Middle school is the stepping stone to high school, then on to life. Adolescence is a unique developmental period in a human's life, with the onset of puberty, the development of prefrontal cortex, and the increased ability to understand and reason." Can you go to slide two, please? So at this time, I would like to introduce our three student representatives. We have Aleah Barnes with us. We have Jordan Bixby, and we have Calvin Mitchell. And they're going to further introduce themselves and answer the big question up there. What will I always remember about RMS? I think Aleah starts.
My name's Aleah. I'm in eighth grade. I'm in Hickory House. And one thing I'm always going to remember about RMS is just the community that we have here and the community building and just the loving relationship that we have with everyone, and also the patience and the understanding of our teachers.
I'm Calvin Mitchell. I'm a seventh grader in Hickory House. And one thing I think I'm going to remember is, I figure our council is just a great place and group for the side of the country stuff.
I'm Jordan Bixby. I'm in seventh grade in Hickory House. And one thing I'll always remember is our Life On The Floor activity. I have a bunch of friends in that group. I'm in fourth grade.
Next slide, please. So you'll notice in the presentation that we have some quotes peppered through there. They've been taken from a text that we've been using in our professional learning. It's called "The Successful Middle School: This We Believe." It's by Penny Marshall and Lisa Harrison. Rachel Mark is our Professional Development Coordinator. She works with the Tarrant Institute and helps to support us in spearheading our learning of best practices in middle-level education. We've actually been doing that for the last two years. Next slide, please. "Successful middle schools for young adolescents implement the full range of structures, supports, and practices known to be most effective with this age group. Academically, our students work on personalized learning paths as directed by Act 77, which allow for choice, exploration, and diversity. We are striving to provide individual instruction that's within each student's zone of proximal development," by Viszatsky. "The sweet spot where instruction is not too easy, but it's not too hard. Our instruction fosters learning that is active, relevant, and democratic. Assessments are standards-based and vary to match student learning profiles. We're using proficiency-based grading scales, and we share success of students' both academics and transferable skills, which are like communication and problem-solving, through our Jump Rope Grade Book. We offer opportunities for student voice. Instruction is responsive, challenging, empowering, equitable, and engaging. And the health, wellness, and social-emotional competence of our students are supported through the curricular and school-wide policies and programs." Next slide, please. "Thankfully, we have been able to access ESER funds to support all our students, and particularly those who have struggled in meeting academic and social goals due to the pandemic. We're happy to share the student successes that have occurred as a result of our recovery efforts." So if you look at the slide under "Supports," we had tutorial services that we did during our April break last year, so 2021, our June ESP, which is at the end of the year, and then our summer boot camps in 2021, as well as we just finished our February break recovery period. And I have the statistics for that. So during the April break, 120 hours were provided to 15 students. During the June, 153 hours provided to 19 students. Summer boot camps, 208 hours of instruction that reached 47 students. And then this last February break, 140 hours of instruction for 17 students. Pretty impressive figures. A total of 498 hours of instruction, and we reached 98 students. Definitely something to celebrate. Everyone showed growth. We also did some summer PD along with that work. Thirteen of our teachers participated in professional development and technology, writing PBL units, working with our advisory program, particularly with our trauma-informed practices, and our social justice curriculum. And I think I have everything there. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Wellstrom.
So, one of the things that we are working on in the middle school is project-based learning within the houses and between content areas. So project-based learning is really a philosophy, a way of thinking about instruction, and it's about engaging students in real-world problems and getting them to bring in student choice and their voice, to engage in conversations with one another, to make connections between the curriculum. Teachers, when they're planning our different project-based learning opportunities, are always keeping the content standards at the center of their planning. So it isn't dessert. It's not that fun project at the end of the year. It's at the heart of what the students are learning, but in a way that really fits adolescent growth and understanding. And Aleah is actually going to speak to... She's an eighth grader, so she's experienced multiple PBL and is going to speak to one of them that she remembers.
The one that I remember the most was the art for action. The PBL was one of the things that I used to, it's something that I was very passionate about, and it was a way for me to use what I had learned and what I had researched, but also apply it to everything in life. And PBL is a great way to do this for students.
And I get to talk about advisory. Advisory is one of my favorite parts of the day at the middle school. It's the second block in our day, and it's a half-hour period.
One more slide. Sorry.
And it's every... Every teacher in our building has an advisory, which is eight to 12 students. We prefer eight to 10. And it's a time for community building, kind of that bonding, and to make sure that every student in our building has a relationship, a positive relationship with an adult. So they have... Sorry, talking with masks on is extremely hard. So much sympathy for our teachers. So they have an advocate. They have somebody they can go to. Parents have a point person that they can talk to if they need. During that time, we talk about current events. There's a whole lot of trauma-informed practice. There's a lot of social-emotional learning, and there's a lot of fun things, too. So our counselors, every week, create the curriculum for the following week's advisory. So the teachers get to walk in with a locally-made-but-set curriculum, which our teachers really appreciate, and it makes it more effective and ensures that all of our students have access to the same events. One of my favorite things about advisory is that every other week, advisories take turns running a community meeting. So each advisory gets to pick one activity for the whole house to do. So I'm on... I associate with Hickory House, as far as we've all kind of divided and conquered. At Hickory House, the students went above and beyond and made up a game about knee volleyball, and you could only... It was very complicated. There were lots of rules, but the kids had a great time. And it's an opportunity for the students to have some voice and have some agency. So those eight kids got to dictate that whole game, and the house just jumped on board, and they loved it. So that has been incredibly successful. Erica?
Okay. So we're going to be talking about community in two different ways.
Our community within the middle school, and then also our interaction with the greater Rutland community. So we're going to start out by talking about our community and the things that we're doing within the middle school. We're going to be talking about our celebrations, strategies and protocols, and sort of practices. But before we get to that, Kelvin's going to talk about the Youth Council and the Student Senate, which Megan was starting to hint at there, so.
So the Youth Council and Student Senate are basically ways that students can get more of a voice than what happens at their school. So Youth Council is we get $5,000, and students send in applications for stuff, and then the Youth Council will come on, sorts through which ones we can actually do, and then a formal amount of money, and we give to them, and then they do their idea. So like, the school store of Snacktoe was a result of a student grant, and also all the furniture in the line is. And Student Senate helps plan all the pepperoni and stuff, or like pie eating contests. So there's one coming up for that, right?
Yeah.
And like, student back to back home and stuff. And then, so basically it's just a way for students to get more of a voice and help people be more of a democracy.
All right. Next slide. Thank you. So we wanted to just mention to you some of our different celebrations and things that we have been doing that were fun. I just want to remind everybody that like, basically, like this week, two years ago, we all kind of went to the remote living, right? And so for our eighth graders that have been there entire middle school, right, that we've been with masks and protocols and COVID, not knowing how close we can be. And middle school is supposed to be about fun and joy and getting to know one another and having pie eating contests. And so we've been doing our best to try and make those things happen, and we're really excited that, you know, as we move forward, that it's going to be able to happen more and more, and that we're at least all in person and coming together. So we wanted to share some of the different things we've done. We've gone to Brambury State Park. We've had essay competitions where students have been recognized, art installations. Aleah's going to talk about our Halloween specifically.
So for Halloween last year and this year, we decided to have a Halloween theme, door decorating, and hallway decorating, our celebration. And basically amongst our houses, we all gathered together, we came up with ideas, and we all worked as a team to try and win a prize at the end, which was probably open to anyone. And this was one of the many ways that our school has tried to help us in this pandemic to come together as a community and really build our relationships even further than what they are now and through the circumstances.
Jordan was going to talk about our student-faculty basketball game.
So I don't remember what date it was, but we had 15 teachers sign up for a student-faculty basketball game. We had some of the students on the basketball game sign up, and they did a basketball game versus the students and teachers. And we had two student coaches for the teachers, and then I don't remember who were the coaches for the students.
And Kelvin's going to speak to two that are coming up that actually the council's been working on.
So the Hickory House Council, so Ms. Marsh, he's toward the high school, right? And they didn't use them any other. And so we thought it'd be a great idea to do one of our own. And so we are currently finding out we've already pulled Ms. Marsh. And we're also doing a talent show, which we planned last student senate meeting. Lots of stuff.
We're looking forward to both. All right. Next slide. Thank you. So another piece that is ongoing and is essential in our school is our equity work. And thinking about those different components, Aleah and Kelvin actually have been active members of our fairness committee that we are starting to put into place. Aleah, can you speak to the fairness committee?
So fairness meeting is something that...
Aleah, can you just speak up a little bit? That's fine.
Fairness meeting is something that Ms. Wellstrom has started, and it is a way for us students to take a problem and not only resolve it, but find different options other than discipline to help students who have altercations. but find different options other than discipline to help students who have altercations, help them find some peace, whether that's the person who lost not to fairness committee or the person who was lost to fairness committee. And it is mainly student-led, while there are some teachers that help, they'll say, they'll hesitate committees. It is mainly run by us students and we even had a woman from New York coming who is very great at what she does. This is what she does, building fairness committees. And she's taught like, as well as in Caldena, how to handle these situations and how us students can resolve problems within our school, while also making sure that it's completely fair and fair to everyone else.
So, obviously equity work has many different components and it's essential and ultimately, we're trying to foster a sense of belonging for all of our students. Fairness committee is one component of that piece where the students are having conversations and are helping to facilitate those conversations. So, we're in the practice stage where the students are actually practicing, but the students that are on the committee are practicing with one another. So, that was where we're at. And Aaliyah mentioned Julie Cottison. She is an educational leadership coach and consultant who's been working with us on the fairness committee. But she, along with Rachel Mark, who is at the Terran Institute, has been working with us to really bring professional development to our faculty and our staff. So, on Tuesdays, we have a chunk of time where we all can come together and we've designed different professional development opportunities for us to have these conversations that are really challenging and difficult and that they're facing, teachers are facing in a classroom and need to be able to address. Some of those things have included a calling in and calling out protocol. So, calling somebody into that issue or calling somebody out if there's something that they are finding problematic. There was also a film, I'm From Here, it was put together by the Vermont NEA and spoke to students and people within Vermont and kind of issues that they've dealt with and the feelings that they've had and have to address. So, we also have a club, Pride Plus, that has been working and meeting regularly. So, trying to build these affinity groups where students can come together and feel supported and feel that they belong and that they have a place in our school. And Megan already spoke to advisory, but advisory is the heart of where students are able to have these conversations where they're talking about, you know, the social-emotional struggles that we all can probably remember back when we were in middle school. So, you can go to the next slide. So, one piece of all of this that, you know, we've heard about, we continue to hear about bullying and harassment. Bullying and harassment happens in our school, it absolutely does. It happens in our community, it happens in our state, it happens in our country. I wish it didn't. I wish that I could say that things are, you know, getting better. We're coming out of a pandemic where students and all of us, I think, are struggling socially and emotionally. And many of our students are dysregulated and we are here to try and support them and to work with them, but also to hold them accountable when they have behaviors that are unacceptable for our community. So, it's a reality. I just wanted to include some bullets about, some statistics about bullying and harassment. It is considered an ACE, an adverse childhood experience. So, to be bullied obviously has a long-term effect on our students, so we take it very seriously. Teens who have been exposed to trauma and violence may be more likely, not necessarily, but maybe more likely bullied or be bullied, so to be the bully or to be bullied. And that by adopting trauma-informed approaches, schools can help prevent bullying and trauma at the school level. So, we've been talking a lot about these different things already. You can see that list over there, but we're just, we're really working on trying to build a sense of community, which these three have all been talking about, our houses, trying to make it feel smaller so they have connections, advisory, all of those different pieces. When they get into the advisory, not only is it a group that they really know and should trust and an adult that they can reach out to and have as an advocate in our school, but they're also actually having those conversations and discussions and trying to work through those things. Our fairness committee, which Aaliyah did a great job explaining, restorative conversation, the idea of having conversations before we get to that point, right? So, and then ongoing professional development, which I've already spoken to. So, school is a place where we build our own community, but we also love to reach out to our greater Rutland community because we are part of it. We are not in isolation, we are part of our community and we're hoping that our young people will stay here and continue to be an active part of our community. So, while we are over on library app, we also really love getting out and seeing all of the different opportunities that are offered right here in Rutland and in our surrounding towns. And so, we hope we can even do more of that moving forward. But this year, we have really kind of branched out and gotten out of our school. So, next slide, please. So, we're going to talk about a couple of different things, but really the goal is building relationships within that greater Rutland community. So, we're going to talk about lifelong sports, internships and our connection. So, next slide. This is one Jordan has been waiting for, she's so excited. So, lifelong sports, which you mentioned at the beginning, is a program that we just started this year. It's a six-week program that occurred every Thursday and students from January, from when we got back from Christmas break until February break. And it was the idea of getting students out and active and physical in some of those darkest days in mid-winter and showcasing the different things that our community has. So, I really want to give a shout-out to all of those community sponsors or places that we went. Bullarama, Pyco, the Mountain Rock Climbing Center, Down Top Resort, the rec department, the gymnasium, Stonehenge. And then we also had, so those were the places that we went, so that we had different groups of students. Every single student in the high school participated in it. It wasn't just a special thing that some of the students did.
You said high school, middle school. It's okay.
I also was at the high school. And, but there were also some clubs that came in and helped. So, Rutland Rocks came in and taught, students had a curl one week. The Castleton Men's Ice Hockey Team came in and helped out. And then Brock was super supportive, making sure that all of our kids had appropriate clothing and, you know, ski gear so that they could go out onto the mountain and not get frost-bitten and everything else. So, it was really a community event to make it happen. So, I really want Jordan to share some of her experiences because that was at the heart of why we did it.
I did ice skating and we had three Castleton Men's Ice Hockey players come in and teach us like a little bit about hockey and everything. Then, like, we might have a curl, we learn, like, we especially like that, so I would be like appealing to the ice. And it was really fun and if we do it again in eighth grade, I think that's what I was going to feel because I just, I really liked that and I felt like it was like a good community for ice skates.
Next slide.
Internships and volunteering. This is something that we as a school are looking to dive into a little bit more. It's been hard during the pandemic, but as numbers are lowering and restrictions are easing up, we really hope to, as Erica said, get our students out into the community. So, even with the pandemic, we've been able to have some safe internships. We've had students internship at Brock Restorative Action, Meals on Wheels. We have students that go two days a week to deliver to residents at Sheldon Towers. They get to practice social skills, they get to practice navigational skills, they get to practice some of their speech and language skills. That's been great. We had a student who did an internship at Unlimited Potential, Avanti's Hair Salon. Our student council raised, gathered 17 boxes for holiday meals for Rutland Middle School families. And we have a teacher currently spearheading students videotaping themselves reading to send to our primary grades. Again, this is something we really hope to carry forward and dive into further. We also wanted to talk about some of our connections that we're particularly proud of. At the end of last year, we had Drift on the Road, who is, it's an organization of resident artists out of New York City. They are very eco-conscious, so when they come, they bring spray paint that actually absorbs some, a certain amount of pollution from the air. And so, they explained that, that all of the scientific goodness behind that to our students. And they also do the math behind every one of their murals to see what the carbon footprint is. And in return, they plant as many trees as they need to offset each mural. So, they came and did a mural for us at the middle school and then did a presentation for our kids. We had a local artist, Catherine Uegers, come and we were lucky enough to get one of her pieces, The Lion, which is out back of our, in the back of our school. We had students who are showing work at the Chaffee Art Center. And we had students attend the Community Sculpture Walk last spring.
So, in closing, I just want to say that we do the work that we do because, and you can see that we have absolutely amazing kids both here and I want to acknowledge over there as well. We just are so proud of everything that they do every day. And it has been a really challenging couple of years and our eighth graders have just shined through it all. Rutland City is a beautiful, beautiful community and I think about it all the time. I think about it particularly lately when I've been talking to teachers and individuals outside of our state and outside of our country. And I talk to kids all the time about how lucky we are. You know, we are not teaching 80 kids at the same time. We are not teaching in environments where teachers get paid less than minimum wage. We are not teaching in those kind of war-torn areas that are really challenging for kids. And as you start to talk to people from outside of our community, you just really appreciate the wonder that is Rutland, Vermont. So, thank you for letting us speak tonight. If you have any questions, I guess.
Any on the board have questions or comments for, okay, Stephanie?
I do, sorry. I've taken lots of notes, so bear with me. So, Patty, you talked about jump rope and an issue when I, when both of my children were in the middle school, that was something I had lots of issues with and it was constant and could never get a real answer. Have, do you know if actually all parents, if any issues have been fixed? And how, you know, are all parents? And I know your, when you, your first year, you and I had that conversation. So, like, I mean, are parents truly getting jump rope?
So, they had IC when kiddos were in school.
Yes.
And so, we converted this issue to the jump rope.
Oh, and that was one of my, yes.
So, remember I told you I wanted to do that, high school had it?
So, we have done that and this is our first year of that. So, I think that parents have been better able to access it, from what I understand.
We also, our IT, one of our IT people just created a, like a screencastify, like a little video so that during our student-led conferences next week, we can push that out to any parents or guardians don't have ready access to.
Right, because I know like in the beginning of the year, you get paperwork that, we all get our amounts of paperwork, which has gotten less as our children get older, but that was one of the paperwork. So, like, you know, something to be more involved as parents, you know, that's something.
Super important.
It is, especially, especially when I get into high school. So, so I'm going to put you on the hot seat for a minute. So, one of the things you talked about were SRFunds and supporting all students. As we've heard from two parents tonight, and as a parent who has dealt with issues in middle school now for five years, the issues have not changed in our middle school in five years. We've had two superintendents, we've had a few different principals. It is a disgrace to our district that this bullying has continued, the issues have continued. We need to stop hiding behind COVID and using that as an excuse. COVID has been going on, as two years Erica pointed out.
Focus on her report.
I am, because it's getting to her report in regards to something that they all talked about was bullying.
Okay.
And I will continue it. So, while you can say you're focusing on bullying and we're on all students every day, and I mean, I made multiple about, like, all of you. Kudos to you guys, I love that all three of you have had positive experiences, but it's not positive, it's not every student every day. We are not, we need to focus on the real issues in our district, in our, in the one school, actually two, that have been going on. We're not doing it. It's not you, it's more the group of us, most, more so the superintendent and the assistant superintendent. I've had conversations with one of them for several years. It needs to change. And the stories that we've heard from these two parents, guess what? I can't even tell you the amount of emails I've gotten. So, while it's great that we sit here and give us all happy, and while our students' reps give us all happy, it's not okay. So, real-world issues, we need to stop going with social-emotional learning. Again, COVID happened, but these issues in regards to using SEL, let's get back to what happened before COVID. That's, I have too many notes in too many places, so, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Yeah, Kevin?
I wanted to thank you for coming, especially students. It's really nice to hear from you guys about what's going on in the schools. And I know, at least for me, it's, it's all, it makes me nervous sitting here. So, for you guys, it's probably even worse though. I appreciate your coming, thank you very much.
I have a question. So, how hard is it to slide on the ice while you push that little rock down there? I watched that on the Olympics and it's like, I don't know how they stand.
It was kind of complicated at first, but then, like, you could tell some students started getting the hang of it. And as we moved on, it started getting a little easier.
Maybe I'll be brave and try it sometime.
I just want to make a comment that you, the three of you are just so, I don't know, grown up. You speak so well, you're very eloquent when you talk, so, good job for you guys for coming up and like, you know, Kevin was saying, it's an air racking just being up here at the table. And you guys, I think, did a really good job. You speak really well, so, okay, we're proud.
Just, I know we get different reports of different stuff and different times in the year. This is my last time sitting this side, maybe next time on that side. But I'm just curious to know, because I do know from being in this seat for a while, is that we do have the ability to look at behavioral and data information. Are we seeing any trends through a collection of that type of things in terms of pre-COVID, post-COVID, during, you know, anything that can guide? And I know you guys are looking at it because that's how we usually do things. Are you able, and this may be not something that you can pull out of your pocket right now, but maybe it will be helpful for everybody to hear some of the big-picture information in terms of what we're seeing or what we're dealing with? I have a middle school, right now I've had a middle school a few years ago.
Yeah, yes.
I have one in a few years. So, we hear that in and out, being a parent and being on the board as well. I just wondered if you had some more information to go along with some of this?
Sure. So, first of all, I would be more than happy to put something together that's more specific. I don't have specific numbers and honestly, Dina, one of the reasons why is because, and I'm not blaming COVID for this.
Right, we've been, we weren't collecting, yes.
Yeah, so, in the last two years, and we're only a two-year school. So, in the last two years, we have not had full, a full complement of students the whole time to be able to compare from one year to the next. But I can tell you that I have looked at three years ago and four years ago and five years ago. And we have less bullying cases now than we did then. Bullying is still a problem, we are not saying it is not a problem, but we do have less cases. We also have less cases of fighting. Part of the problem with fighting is that we've looked at that data quite a bit. Most of the fights, believe it or not, occur outside of school. They occur, you know, a half an hour after school's out and then we do get phone calls, obviously, from people regarding that fighting that happens. We have not had an SRO since. We have not had an SRO since, I believe it's November. Unfortunately, our SRO has been ill. And not that that's a, you know, there's nothing anybody can do about it, so I understand that. But our SRO was a figure that was their, sorry, School Resource Officer, I'm so sorry. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Look, I could answer your question the second I saw your hand. Um, School Resource Officer. So we've, so we, you know, we rely on, on him to, to show up pretty much once a week and be a presence in our school and be able to help, I'm sorry, I'm directing everything here, sorry. And be able to help with a lot of those, those family altercations that we find happen from generations of, of folks. So I, maybe that answers your question? I'm more, as I said, more than happy if you would like, you know, to, to put together any kind of statistics that you would like.
And I think it's something we would get, those type of, I remember seeing those reports at some point.
Yes, you'll get the, yes, you'll get some of it, yes.
Some point in the continuum.
State reports.
Thank you.
Just really, really quick, to add to maybe, and talking about collecting data, I'd be interested in, in getting some data on the jump rope participation of maybe parents. Because I'd like to get the parents more engaged and maybe we can take some of that information. And maybe it might take a few years, but if we start now, maybe we can get some data on maybe how many people we can, and how do we get them engaged?
Absolutely. That may coincide with you guys starting in the high school who's been doing it for years.
I'm waiting, happy to get that data.
Just interested, maybe, you know, it's a starting point, you know, now and maybe we'll figure something out.
Tricia, and then Bill?
So just to follow up kind of what Dina had mentioned, but it would be nice, I understand we're going to have a transition with the board, but moving into the new year, it would be awesome to think not just you, but also the high school, I understand, has had a lot of issues as far as fighting and nefarious activities in the restrooms, from what I understand. But it would be nice to come together as a board. I actually would gladly volunteer to be a part of that. But to come up with track, like, you know, thing, the tracking system. And maybe at board meetings, we could be covering how are we doing good behaviors at the high school and the middle school, the, the two areas which seem to be the most compromised. So that the community is informed and we're all on top of it. Because if we're not going to acknowledge a problem, it can't be fixed. So maybe there's other things that we need, like I agree with you, the Student Resource Officer is definitely something that maybe we need to be considering to have one in the high school and have one in the middle school where a lot of these issues are happening so that these children feel they have somebody they identify with. So I think it's not looking to blame administration, but administration needs to be forthcoming with what's happening so that we can step up and help out and support. Because it makes me very sad to hear of these two particular parents whose children had to go through that. And I can't imagine being that age and having my hair cut. It sounds like something so survivable at our age. But that would be a very distressing thing and I can only imagine how I would have felt. Yeah, it's, it's heartbreaking.
Allison, then I'm going to go.
So, you know, you mentioned the School Resource Officer. Have we instead looked at something or increased our counseling or social services? As many studies have proven that that's a lot more effective, especially in this interim if we're missing someone that might have been acting in that capacity?
I can't give you the statistics. I'm sure either Mr. Olson or Mr. Bliss can. But I know that we have tried to hire counselors and have been unsuccessful at hiring them. I just don't know how, you know, how many advertisements were, were left unfilled. Very difficult to find counselors in Rutland right now.
Can I just go for something in my comment just?
Yes.
Last time, last time.
Who, Mr. Olson's been on.
I, I understand that the, the system to collect this information exists. And I'm not in any way suggesting that that was not there. I know it's there and I know it's done. And I know it's being reported to us when it's available. And I know COVID, COVID has changed, whether you like it or not, it's been a factor. So, so I was not implying in any way that that was not happening. I know, I've seen it, I've seen it in, in schools looking at that information, not specifically to the middle school. So I know the system exists and I know we've been getting reports on it in the past. And I think it's good to have those reports because it does identify in a greater scheme of things where we're standing. That was.
Miss Wilson. Your turn. See, I didn't even look anywhere else.
Thank you so much. I, I think if, if the board would like to have a report about, about this topic, we'd be glad to do that. And it's, it's, we should do that because that's part of what, we're talking about recovery from the pandemic. It's part of what the money should be spent on. This is what we're working towards. I, I think you have to remember, this is, this kind of thing is happening nationwide, statewide, regionally. And it's, we're talking about twenty-four months of isolation for kids, lack of routine, economic instability for families.
You speak up a little bit, I'm sorry if I'm hearing back here.
And so you have all of that. You, you, we kind of shut down school to a certain extent for parts of two years. And so now we're trying to return to that and get back into those routines that help kids do well. So a lot of what you talked about, some of the relationship building, the, trying to make sure that, that kids feel good about being with their peers, being with their, with their, you know, engaging activities, engaging instruction. All of that is really what we are trying to do through recovery to try to help kids do well. You three guys did a great job explaining that. So if we can, we can talk about that district-wide as well. Because it's, it's something that we've been working on as a district for years with, you know, being trauma-informed. And now with the pandemic, it's something that's really coming to more of a point that we, we want to address. So we'll be glad to talk about that further.
All right. Thank you, Miss Wilson. Thank you, Middle School team. We'll now hear from the high school team.
I just, I'm just looking at my.
I've seen them before, I know they're.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome to. Good evening and thank you for having us here to speak with you this evening. We're going to speak with you and we unfortunately do not have eighth graders to augment our presentation. Because I know they would do a much better job than we. The high school, the, one of the things that you'll notice in our presentation tonight is that you're going to see common themes, actually from K to two, right up through the cross grade. A high school really serves as one of the bookends for Rutland City, Portland, Utah educational experience. So you, in both northeast and northwest, as well as the middle school, talked with you about some of the things that you see on the slide, including academics, SEL, regulated, trauma-informed teaching practices, as well as personalized learning. So one of the themes that I hope you'll notice tonight is continuation of some of the themes that really developmentally began at a much, much younger age. At the beginning of this year, we were really pleased to welcome back into the building eight hundred students that had had such a diverse range of experiences for the previous, really about twenty-four months. Everything from students who had been in school every day for regular experiences to students who had not stepped foot in school for any one of those days, to students who also had a hybrid experience where it was back and forth. So we always have a diverse student population entering our school every year. This year in particular was, that, that diversity was accentuated by the diverse experiences over the previous twenty-four months. So our process for our goals are three big categories, three big goals that we have had in the high school for a number of years. One of the first things, before I turn it over to my colleagues who will introduce themselves, one of the ways that we historically and we continue to involve and seek investment from faculty is through what we call our action planning process. So a regular set of meetings throughout the year are devoted to action plan committee meetings. So each of these that are listed there, these are committees of faculty who are each devoted to that particular topic during the course of the year. And you'll see, we have those three big goals that I spoke about. The first being academics, the second being social emotional learning, and the third being personalization. Each of these big categories, each of these action planning goals fit into one of those three big categories. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues. And first, it's going to be Steve Hampton to talk with you a little bit about the first big goal of teaching and learning.
Thanks again for having us this evening. As Greg pointed out, I'm going to be talking about teaching and learning. And it, you know, you take a look at the slide that's on the screen in the front room, that, that really represents what we're aiming for. A tight alignment of instruction and assessment practices to, to help our teachers do the work that they do in a classroom every day. Next slide, please. And this year in particular, but also every year, we have a large focus on curriculum work. Throughout the year, we've been focusing on updating and evaluating our curriculum resources. And the structure we have in place to do that work is our professional learning community. And our content level teams are able to meet every Wednesday morning for about an hour. And then on average, I would say about two Tuesday afternoons. And some of the particular points of emphasis during those times are these bulleted items that are, that are provided in your packet. So I'm going to take just a second to review, kind of in layman's terms, what some of these things mean. Just to make sure we're kind of on the same page. So scope and sequence is basically teachers coming up with what they want to teach, when they're going to teach it, and how long it's going to take them to teach that particular material. Prioritized standards are the standards that teachers are teaching their kids. Proficiency scales is actually a document that teachers share with their students. And it breaks down their prioritized standards into smaller chunks. And it's also a way to communicate to their students exactly what they're expected to know and be able to do by the end of a particular unit. Personal tracking matrices is a fancy way of saying it's a resource for students to monitor their own learning. They're able to track what they're learning throughout a particular unit. Instructional practices, pretty much what it sounds like. Constructional practices are the things that teachers do in the classroom every day to help their students understand what they're teaching, what they're learning about. And then the last few here, formative assessments, is basically a way for teachers to determine how well students are understanding the material they're being taught prior to the end of the unit, final test, final assessment, which is the next bullet, the summative assessment, which is a culminating assessment at the end of each unit. And we've gotten away from what we all probably knew as a summative assessment, which was more or less a formal task. So we do still do some of that, but a lot of our summative assessments now are things like lab exercises, presentations, written reports, essays, those sorts of things. The middle school talked a little bit about project-based learning, some emphasis on projects. Those sorts of things serve as summative assessments. And then the final bullet are interventions. And interventions are the resources that teachers have available to them to ensure that students are able to learn to the best of their ability. So if students are struggling in a particular area, a teacher may assign a student to their flex block or may coordinate with a guidance counselor, an administrator, or other colleagues to recommend placement in a program called credit recovery or a competency-based learning course. Next slide, please. Part of the interventions that we have this year through the use of some S R funding includes a STEM interventionist. STEM is science, technology, engineering, and math. So there's an emphasis on science and math here. Our STEM interventionist this year is Ben Toby Milne. And he's teaching a couple of sections of competency-based biology. I'm sorry, one section of competency-based biology, a section of competency-based chemistry. And then two sections of Math 360. And I'll also point out that we have some content area teachers that also teach competency-based level courses. Next slide. A minute ago, I talked a little bit about credit recovery and competency-based classes. We have increased both of those areas, again, thanks to S R funds. And this year, we have thirty-two sections of credit recovery. And credit recovery for the last several years has been taught by Fern Fryer and Diana Wilson. And this year, we have sixteen sections of competency-based courses. And then the last slide I'm going to talk about is, has to do with the school's relationship with Marzano Research. I think we've been working closely with the folks at Marzano for ten or eleven years now. And for the last handful of years, we've been going through this certification process to demonstrate to an outside agency for Level One that we are a safe and collaborative school. We finished that certification, I think it was like three or four years ago. We reached effective teaching in every classroom at the very beginning of the school year last year. And we're currently working on our Level Three certification, which is guaranteed by their full curriculum. And then I'll also take it back to a point that Greg talked about a little bit earlier. And this HRS, High Reliability Schools, Action Plan Groups is a team that meets about once a month on Tuesday afternoons. It's part of that action planning work that we do as a high school. So those are the slides that I'm presenting tonight. I'm going to pass it on to Jen, but before I do that, if the chair wants to.
Do they have questions for this part of it? Okay?
Can you just tell us what sections mean?
Sections, the number of courses, so, A section, so like, for credit recovery, we have two sections. I think Fern teaches two sections each day. So she might have a class, don't hold me to the exact timeframe, but she might have a class A and B block, that's two sections. And then Diana Wilson might have sections C and D block, so that would be two more.
How many students are we talking about?
That I'm not sure of off the top of my head.
And are those the only, we're going to, basically, I think our brains are in the same. And so are those the only two that teach this credit recovery? And is it just to, is it classes that they teach or, or like across the board? Like, can you explain that piece a little bit more?
So, so credit recovery is an opportunity for students who are struggling in any of the content areas.
So content meaning like math, science, English?
Yes, yeah. And they, they are scheduled into a section of credit recovery where they get some assistance in that content area where they're struggling to get. where they get some assistance in that content area where they're struggling to get caught up to speed.
And is that instead of the class that they're officially in or in addition?
Like a tutoring type?
Yeah, yeah.
And again, back to his question, how many students? I mean, it may change, is it something like, kind of like flex block, where you're like put into a flex, so each day it's different?
It's not, it's not different each day, but it is a little bit of a moving number.
There's normally those two people?
There might be five students in there today. Two weeks from today, there might be seven, then that number might drop down. We typically make those adjustments at the quarter. You know, so in the first quarter, it stays pretty firm. And then, if there's a change, is that the end of the quarter?
So like with flex, teachers generally put the student in? Is this something that a teacher will recommend them to be? And is it, like flex, I know if the student misses, there's kind of, you know, a loose consequence. If the student doesn't want to be a part of that, do they have to? Is it required?
Yeah, it is, so there is a process. Usually, that process is between a content level teacher. So, an English teacher might recommend Jen for credit recovery, okay? And then, that content level teacher, the English teacher, would work closely with the administration, with the guidance counselor. If the student was on a support service plan, like an IEP or a 504 with a case manager, they would come together, make a final decision. And then, if it required a schedule change, they would add that to the student's schedule. Karen would be involved.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, before you hit, Allison, did I see your hand or no?
Nope.
Okay, sorry.
Thanks, Harley. Just based on what you were saying, Stephanie, is this, you were talking about ESER funds. So is there a higher percentage needed right now? Is that what the whole point of this is? Due to COVID, maybe a higher percentage of recovery and services needed?
So, credit recovery, yes is the short answer to your question. So, credit recovery is a program that we've had for a number of years. That's been there for a while. We've tried to, I think, sort of solidify that program. Competency-based is a newer addition. And the idea there, in answer to your question, is, you know, I go to A block, English class, B block, math class, C block, competency-based science. So it's built into my schedule. There's a teacher, there's a room, there's attendance. So, yes, I would say there is an increase of need for me. And some of that is being met there.
This might be just my not understanding how it worked, and it's been maybe a little while. I was thinking that you could, kids would schedule flex time to go see their teacher to catch up on things, but you're, I think what I'm hearing is that this credit recovery thing is a more extra, they need extra work. So they're going to do the credit recovery instead of doing this time with their teacher to catch up? No?
Yes, it's both. Yeah. Flex block is a separate class period. And that's, that's a requirement for, generally speaking, all students. There are some seniors that have a privilege of not having to go to that. But every other student is expected to sign up for a flex block Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. They have some discretion in terms of whom they want to sign up with, which teacher they want to go with, with one small exception. If I'm Charlene's math teacher, and Charlene's not doing particularly well in math, I can teacher-direct Charlene into my flex. So I'm saying, you've got to come to my math class. And then, you don't have any say in that. You're missing some work, we've got to get together to get you caught up.
We gotta chat. The credit recovery, how does that slide into that?
Is that like if you're failing?
So, I can try to tackle this at the beginning.
Sorry.
I'm Bianca McKeen, I'm one of the associate principals, and my main area is teaching and learning. But flex is like a tier-one intervention that all students would be entering a flex block every day, getting some extra support. Credit recovery is more like a tier-two. So a student would be scheduled for a credit recovery class, which would be a class that fits into their schedule, where they work on work for their other classes. So they don't do additional work in that class. It helps them to make sure they can attain credit in the other classes that they're doing.
More enrichment?
And some students are in credit recovery for the entire year. Some students might go in for a term, and you see a student, especially like at this time of year, a senior that's struggling, you might say, let me move you out of the study hall into the credit recovery block so you can get caught up. The teacher and the counselor and the administrator stay in communication with the credit recovery teacher. The credit recovery teacher has access to the student jump rope. They can check assignments and say, wait a second, Mr. Sampson here, what about that lab that's due tomorrow? Like, what's work on math? So it's built into the student's schedule, it is an attendance block. One of the reasons we have more sections now is one of the things we did last year is we made credit recovery both a red day section and a white day section. So some students might have it every day, red and white day. Some students might have it every other day and have only red day Simon credit recovery, white days for B blocks, I'm in English class. So every schedule's a little bit different. Does that help?
Yes. And they can get into this class in the middle of a term?
Ideally, they're in it at the start, but it is very flexible. If there's space, we try to keep the class at twelve students maximum because of the nature of the work that they're doing. But if there's space, or if we know a student really needs the block, we will add them and say, yep, we're going to put you in there now. And most of the time, they're staying in it till the end of the term. Occasionally, we would take them out early if they've demonstrated they don't need to be there any longer.
So it's two teachers, like A through E block per block? Nope, she's saying no.
It runs A through D. So we have one teacher that teaches A and B block every day. And we have another teacher who teaches C and D block every day. So these teachers work part-time, they're, I think, paid through title funding.
So Lat, you said this number, the thirty-two of sections, has upped from previous years. So, but it's still the same two people and it's still part-time?
It's a little misleading. It's about the same number of sections, but one of the adjustments we made was to divide into that red day, white day. So to give more flexibility for more students to access it, and then to maybe decide how much they needed. Did they need a whole block every day for a quarter? Did they need a whole block every other day for a quarter? So it runs A, B, C, D, all four quarters, and then red day, white day.
I guess it's misleading.
It's not bad, it's all stop.
Well, one last thing, I mean, the levels of support. Flex block is something that every student, almost every student is facing. Credit recovery is a program that has been there for a long time. We've used, we have seen some success there. The newer addition is really competency-based. Like that's, in terms of where, where has the expansion been? The expansion has been in the addition of those competency-based sections.
All right, who's up next?
Hi, I'm Jen Bigborn, one of the other associate principals here. And I'm going to switch gears just a little bit and talk about what we're doing at the high school, the social-emotional learning. So, social-emotional learning, the way we look at it is we're supporting students as they navigate high school and prepare them for life after high school, including things like decision-making, goal-setting, and learning how to manage and navigate conflicts in school. So some of the things that we've done are expanding our, what was previously called Room 111. And we've expanded that to have two of those classrooms. We now call it PACE. And PACE stands for Program of Academic Competency Education. Big mouthful. But that's, so PACE is, then we now have two classrooms for PACE. One is supported through ESER funding. We also increased the capacity of Grove Street. We've continued increasing that number. And we've added, continued adding the support of an English teacher and a science teacher at Grove Street. We also have a brand-new program that both Bianca and I will be talking about a little bit. It's called School Within a School. Well, within, we're just in the second week of this. It's, we're really happy with the outcome and how it's running. It's after school, it's from 3:30 to 5:30 for students who have, who have struggled at the high school for various reasons. It could be academic, attendance, anxiety, a lot of, every student in there has a different reason for being there. And so, we embed social-emotional learning in the curriculum. And it's also very small. It's about, I think we're at twelve kids now. And we'd like to keep it within fifteen, around fifteen or twenty if we can. So it's small, so that helps with the teachers having a nice relationship with the students. We also hired a full-time clinician using ESER funding. Next slide, please. This is my favorite slide that I'm presenting tonight because it's all about school spirit, and there's a ton of smiles on that screen. So, this is all about getting back to normal, getting back to pre-COVID, and activating the school, the school's spirit and activities and opportunities for students to socialize with each other after being remote for so long. And we know, we all know, the school's spirit and a common goal can have a Titanic impact on social-emotional learning. Next slide, please. So these are just some examples of some, we have lots of clubs and activities, as you know. But these two, these three slides are about some things that we've done. The one up in the upper right-hand corner is our Veterans Day ceremony that we had in the cafeteria this year. The other bulletin board, How to Defeat the Winter Blues, was sponsored by our You Matter group. And You Matter is about helping teenagers make healthy decisions. And there's, so students could grab a little, little piece of paper at the bottom to help them kind of get through the winter, the dark winter. And then, the other one is hashtag Get It Together, and that was sponsored by our National Honor Society. And it was all about trying to help students to make good decisions about our building and taking care of our building and making sure that we're, that we're continuing to have a safe, clean environment for everyone to live in. Next slide, please. So, our Rowland Fellowship continues. We are incredibly fortunate to have had so many Rowland Fellowships offered to us. Stacy Shortle, our school psychologist, is now in the second year for Rowland Fellowship, which is sort of the implementation phase. And it's definitely, she's definitely been implementing things. Some of the things that she's been doing is the, our social-emotional curriculum that we're working on, I'll talk about that in a minute. She's continuing to do some training. One example is the training that she's recently done with Megan Crozier, one of her other counselors, and about putting an SEL curriculum into schools, looking at ten different indicators and how to make that work. We have an action plan committee that is focused solely on social-emotional learning in a school. We are continuing with trauma-informed practices and flexible scheduling and things like we've talked about just a few minutes ago, School Within a School. The other thing that Stacy's doing is she is continuing her work in learning more about restorative practices. And she has actually gone to the second level of that, and she's now taken the course to be a train-the-trainer. So she will, she is trained to be a trainer so she can help other people, other staff members in our school become experts in restorative practices. That's something that's also ongoing. Next slide, please. So this is our, this is a slide that talks a little bit about our advisory. Our advisory is set up very similarly to what the middle school has talked about, about the same size, once a week. It's about forty minutes, I think, that we need. We keep the same students all four years, so it becomes a really nice collaborative, safe environment for students to talk about, sometimes some kind of sensitive topics. So some of the things that you can see up there, there's different, four different modules. Each module correlates to the year that they're in school. So Module One is for freshmen, and it goes up to Module Four for seniors. Some of the things that, for example, as freshmen, they talk about test-taking strategies, studying, study skill strategies, how to navigate high school. And then, you know, we go through different things in accordance to their age and development, all the way up to preparing for college and what to do, you know, how to make decisions about what you're going to do after school, after high school. And the next slide is about equity. And we're continuing with equity, that is also one of our, one of our action plan committees. And we're working on looking at our global program, program of studies, and our student handbook, and trying to ensure appropriate reviews in that. And we're also looking at first-taking patterns for students and making sure that that's equitable. And our athletic and extracurricular programs to make sure that there are no barriers for students to participate in those. And that's it for me.
Questions on her behalf, Allison?
I just had a question. You mentioned expansion of the Grove Street capacity. Have we been able to expand beyond eleventh grade? Or are we still just eleventh and twelfth? Because I know there was some conversation way back about wanting some capacity for some younger students to have the...
Typically, it's, it was eleven and twelve in the past.
Okay, yep.
They've accepted a few more tenth graders. Not typically ninth graders, but we've lifted that to tenth graders. They want to have a few credits under their belts, so they're not there for the full four years.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? Okay.
Okay, so, thank you for having us. I'm Bianca McKeen, and I will be talking about personalization of learning at Rowland High School. And in a school of eight hundred students, it really is a Titanic task to think about personalization for all of our students. So I will talk about some of the efforts we have underway. One of my personal goals, and I know a goal that we all share, is to increase our flexibility and personalization for students. I think you've heard tonight, and we all have seen, that students' needs are varying greatly. And so we really need to think creatively and differently about how we can create programming to best meet students' needs academically, socially-emotionally, behaviorally. So, some of the things that we offer, we continue to offer and are constantly expanding our flexible pathways. Advanced placement courses, this year, we have a hundred and three students enrolled in thirteen courses. We also have students taking some advanced placement courses through Virtual High School, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a minute. We have, we started last year and have rolled out, I talked about this a little bit with our program of studies, our competency-based classes, which are, it's an opportunity for a student who has struggled in some of the traditional classrooms to have a prioritized curriculum where they're focusing on specific standards, same standards we would in other courses, but they might be demonstrating their learning in a slightly different way. There might be less assessments for a student. And we've seen a lot of success with those classes for students who are able to attend and really move through that curriculum. We have our PLACE internship program, which I will talk about in just a couple moments. We have a partnership with Virtual High School, which allows students to engage in courses that we don't have the capacity to offer to all students. It's a little underutilized, we keep trying to increase enrollment. We have five students enrolled right now. They are taking classes like Italian Language and Culture, Animal Behaviors and Diology, AP US Government Politics, AP Computer Science Principles, and Philosophy. So, courses we couldn't fill at the high school, but through that partnership, we're able to offer those experiences. We have Early College, we have eleven students enrolled in Early College, and we have eighty students currently doing dual enrollment courses through our partnerships with various colleges around the state and the area. And we continue to offer our Global Studies and STEM concentrations, which I'll speak a little bit about as well. So at the high school, we offer two additional, so every student, we hope, will receive their Rowland High School diploma. Students can elect to seek an additional endorsement, or both endorsements that we offer. We have our Global Studies program and our STEM program, so science, technology, engineering, and math. And if students choose to enroll in this concentration, they are on track already as ninth and tenth grade students to meet the expectations for that. It's specific coursework, there's a lot of flexibility. We actually had a committee that reviewed these concentrations, which have been around for a while now this summer. And we looked at, you know, are these equitable for students? So can all students have access if they choose to seek the concentration? And are they flexible enough? And we did have some student input on that as well. And we sort of refined those. And last year, last year our numbers were a little low with the concentrations, I think partially because of the pandemic, although we did offer alternatives. Every year, we have around fifteen to twenty-seven students that see each of those endorsements for graduation. So if they meet the requirements, they get a special designation on their diploma. All right, we have our Global Studies and STEM Fair, which is part of that concentration. All right, we have our Global Studies and STEM Fair, which is part of that concentration work. All students take part in that event. This year's fair is on Thursday, April 7th, at 6:00 PM at the high school. Ninth grade students work to, and obviously these pictures are the last time, or a couple years ago when we had the fair in person. We pivoted and had some remote options the last two years. Students in both ninth and 10th grade have the opportunity to share their learning that they're doing in their classes. It's usually interdisciplinary. And also a lot of our Capstone students will share their presentations as well. So it's a really great exhibition of student work. Our PLACE program is promoting learning by activating community engagement. This is our student internship program. This came out of another Rowland Fellowship that we were fortunate to have. And these are some of our community mentors. This year we have 31 students participating in PLACE internships. Students do 60 hours at a minimum with their community partner. They engage in a service learning project to give back to the community partner. It's really grown tremendously, and the students and the mentors have been so flexible, especially during COVID, to make that happen. So this is just a sampling of some of the mentors over the past few years that this has been going, that continues to grow, and we're very fortunate that we have such a supportive community. It's mainly juniors and seniors who would enroll in this course. I would say the numbers are down a teeny bit this year because some students, you know, last year we had some remote placements, but I do think that it's high interest for Capstone is one of our most personalized classes. So usually, if a student is seeking the Global Studies or STEM concentration, they have to take the Capstone class, but the class is open to all students at Rutland High School. And in this course, it's usually done junior or senior year. Students are selecting their own topic to study, and the teacher's really there to guide them, but they are utilizing their skills that they've learned throughout their programming at Rutland High School, and they're rolling with their topic of choice. And they present at both our Global Issues Network Conference and our Semi-Global Studies Fair, or one or the other. And they also do an action project along with this, where they find a way to sort of do a service learning around their topic of choice. And those, those vary greatly, what that action project looks like. But again, they work with the teacher, and the teacher really is like a guide for the students here. So, as I mentioned, we have our Global Issues Network Conference, which is coming up, and I think that Lauren talked about this as well, Thursday, March 31st. This year's theme is Regenerating Civil Dialogue and Peace, and we have a Rutland High School alumni coming in to speak, Drew Peterson, who works for the US Department of State. We have a student who created a less-than-a-minute promotional video that you'd like to show.
It's a little loud, Allison, look out.
You're ready. It shows how beautiful our campus is. So, we are excited about that event. We have a lot of community partners who come in and speak to students. Students have the opportunity to do some community service or engage with the theme this year. Every year, the theme is connected to the Sustainable Development Goals. This year it's connected to Goal 16, and we are excited about that event. Next slide, please. So, when we talk about personalization of learning, we have a lot that we offer, and not everything is right for every student, so it's really about providing different opportunities. Some other things that we've done to help increase engagement and advancement of students, so promotion from one grade to the next. We've added some additional sections of our Concepts and Applications classes, which have a little bit more support. Some of those classes are co-taught by a special educator and a classroom teacher, a content area specialist. Our competency-based classes that I spoke about, competency-based is very flexible, and if we have a section of competency-based social studies, students in the room might be working on civics, they might be working on US history, they might be working on world history, and all of that's happening in the same space. We also, this year, we had some students who were not quite ready to join us full-time at the high school from the middle school. So we worked with the middle school administration over the summer and created a linked-up program. Students attend the middle school for what is our A and B block. They get on a bus and they come up and they spend C, D, and E with us, and they work on high school credits during that time. So that's new this year. I don't know if that need will still be there in the future, but it has helped a certain group of students who needed something a little different. And as Jen mentioned, just last week, we started School Within a School. This program is for students who have been a little disconnected or who maybe weren't making academic progress or struggled, perhaps behaviorally, perhaps academically, maybe with attendance, maybe with anxiety. I'd just like to read a quote that, from an email that we received from a parent whose student is enrolled in the program. We received this on Friday. She said, speaking about her son, "He comes home happy and ready to share. I know all about his teachers, courses, and his schedule. I think the limited classroom changes, small group setting, and condensed schedule has been perfect for him and will keep him out of trouble." So, for this group of students, they come in, they work on our competency-based curriculum. We have content area teachers working with students. It's pretty much self-contained, but we have a couple breakout spaces. And we have had some students, one student yesterday who wasn't able to catch the bus, called the teacher and said, "I really want to be there. Can somebody please, can we find a way for me to get there?" And, you know, it might not be the best program for every student, but for a certain group of students, so far, it's going pretty well. So that's really what we're trying to do with personalization, is look at our student needs. It's taken us a little while this year. I think we were all a little thrown off by the intense needs of our students coming back in person, everybody. And so we really had to get to know our students, what's working, what's not, and think a little bit differently. So that's what we're trying to do, and we hope to continue with those kinds of unique and different efforts.
Questions on Bianca's section? Questions? Okay. Thank you all.
Couple more.
Couple more? Okay.
I'll wrap it up, and I promise to be quick. So, our work is not done. We have more work to do. In terms of teaching and learning, our intent is to continue and to complete our Marzano certification. Part of that work, too, is to complete that curriculum work. We have a two-year report. You may recall, we had our MIAST accreditation visit two and a half years ago. That report, in light of everything going on, has been held off, but we need to submit a two-year report to talk about, and in particular, a lot of that curriculum work. So those are some of our teaching and learning goals. Social-emotional, we need to continue our professional development on social-emotional, restorative, and crisis prevention practices in classrooms, and also to continue to develop the use of our advisory for student, for ongoing student relationship building. Lastly, in terms of personalization, incorporating the Support and Alternative Program into the school day. Our efforts for personalization really go in two directions. It's creating opportunities to create a personalized educational day, where the student is creating that personalized experience. And also, in some cases, we as a school are personalizing the offerings for the student's needs. So that personalization is really going in two different directions. We need to incorporate those things right into the school day, including differentiation on personalization. I would be remiss, in terms of the next slide, it would be impossible for me to thank all of the individual faculty and staff members for the work that they've been doing. This work that we've been doing is really happening in classrooms and because of the fantastic classroom teachers, as I said, faculty and staff that are doing that. So I wanted to thank them. And that is our presentation. Any other questions?
Any questions?
I have a quick one.
Yep.
So, as a parent who is very involved in both of my high school students, I look at jump rope quite often. If, and some teachers are really good about it and others are not, if the students are expected to do their work, why is it not expected of the teachers to regularly put the grades in jump rope? Now, we'll say however many, before jump rope, they had their paper books. I can tell you, from my own personal experience, the lack of, I will use one particular teacher, it got to really be a point where this teacher was saying stuff was late, I was physically making my child take pictures. It's gotten a little bit better now that we can actually use the Google, and it like tells you, tells the students when they went in it, when, you know, when updates were made. Why, and you may not be able to necessarily answer this, but it's, if the students are expected to do the work, I shouldn't, as a parent, or more so the student, have to wait to say, "What's my grade?" Bianca, you're the one, you send out progress reports. So that progress report is never accurate, and again, some teachers are good. And again, I can use very specific examples, but I'm not going to do it on camera because I will embarrass my own children. But it's, progress reports are good to an extent, but if the teachers aren't doing their job, and I understand and I have utmost respect for them and I get it, but if you can old-school write it in a piece of paper, then you should be able to sit there on the computer and do it. The grade book, it's no different, paper or computer. So I think that that's something that the teachers, one thing that I truly believe needs to change, and that's been something since the middle school that I've had an issue with. So we, you know, there's an expectation on both sides.
Okay, thank you very much. And now, we will have recognition of our UVM Master of the Year. One just so happens to be an old classmate of mine.
Don't date yourself.
No. We're dating each other, I guess. You know, it's one of those things, where it's like, we've got a few years before we get that golden diploma.
Hello, everybody. I'm Suzanne Wilson, I'm principal at Rutland High School, and I'm very happy to present one of Ron's Outstanding Teacher of the Year. Lynn Churchill has been a teacher with Rutland City, who is Churchill? Has been a teacher at Rutland City Public School for more than twice its years. Her first five years were as a special educator at Dena School, and then she shifted to a primary school classroom teacher at Northeast. Lynn is skilled at providing differentiated instruction and providing the kind of consistent, calm, and caring environment that is needed and craved by our students. Lynn values team efforts and is a strong collaborative coworker. She's flexible and willing to take extraordinary measures in both extraordinary and ordinary times. Lynn beautifully balances work and family. She's raising two teenage daughters, Rutland High graduates, and is the kind of mother, sister, and daughter that many of us strive to become.
I'm honored that Suzanne nominated me for this award and that I received it. I'll tell you a funny story. I got the email from UVM, and as a teacher, you get lots of different emails, and it's usually click this link in a $29.99 to be on this. So I didn't think anything of it until Suzanne emailed me, and I was like, "Oh, I thought it was a scam." I almost knew. But I'm just very honored and very lucky and fortunate to work at Northeast Primary School, where we all work together, we all support each other, we're all there for each other. We're not looking for ourselves, we're looking for everyone. And my comment to Suzanne was, there are so many teachers at our school that deserve this award. So I'm just very thankful.
I am pleased to commend to you Ms. Ellie Daven as this year's UVM RHS Teacher of the Year. Ellie is a 23-year veteran of the Rutland High School Social Studies Department, whose teaching is as innovative and dynamic as that of a brand-new teacher. Ellie teaches psychology, and also, along with her colleague, Tabori Brule, co-teaches the Civics and Economics Graduation Requirement. As I mentioned, these classes are a graduation requirement for every high school student who graduates from Rutland High School. That, her work here makes for a Titanic influence in terms of her students and graduates. Ms. Daven is the right person for such an awesome teaching responsibility. In these classes, she engages students in active projects that teach them the workings of their community and their country. She also challenges them to think critically about the world around them. In the past two years, she has been a rock. Ellie's students describe her as committed and dedicated, and she is devoted to their success. This Thursday night, she will have the opportunity to watch her youngest play at UVM. I am pleased, I am enormously pleased to say that she will serve as this year's Rutland High School Teacher of the Year.
Thank you. That was very awesome. I want to publicly thank my colleagues that nominated me for this award. I'm fairly truly humbled, truly humbled to have been nominated and very honored to receive this award. As Greg mentioned, 23 years. I thought it was 22, but I'm counting. You know, over these 22 or 23 years, a lot has changed in the district. But I have to say this, that one thing has not changed, and that is the undying relentless commitment by everyone in the district. And I mean, from the school board, current and past, superintendent, current and past, assistant superintendent, building leadership, my colleagues, K through 12, support staff, maintenance, bus drivers, the passion and compassion that I have seen in the 23 years that I've been here. It is unbelievable. And lastly, the joy that I get from my job every day comes from my students, both in the classroom currently and when I run into them, and like, they're 10 years, or 15, or 20 years. And they are so excited to share, I tend to point, and they're so excited to share what they have accomplished. And, you know, really proud to come back and share that with me, and that really brings me joy. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report.
Holly, could I ask Kristi Colletti to come up to the table for two seconds? So we'll keep the applause going. This is Kristi Colletti. Kristi is replacing Lauren Pep as the principal at Northwest School in Pierpoint Learning Center in July. And I wanted to introduce you all to her. She's currently the principal at Proctor Elementary. She's worked at RCPS as a special educator and as a coordinator of support services. She has served with the VPA on the side on various committees, including the VPA's Equity Committee and the Activity Standards Committee. Kristi also mentors other administrators around the state, and she also has time somehow to teach as an adjunct professor at Castleton. So Kristi, we are very, very happy to... So Kristy, we are very, very happy to have you back here 10 years later. It's good, good to have you back, and we're looking forward to having you at, at Northwest and Pierpoint. I wanted to thank the screening committee who helped do the, do the selection, and that was led by Pam Reed. On the committee also were Brittany Kovakis, Brian Kupali, Suzanne Engels, Margaret Itoy, Jessica Henderson, Rachel Caigle, Kathy O'Rourke, Stephanie Studley, and Jeff Weld. So I wanted to thank that group for, for doing all that work and coming up with a great, great answer in the end. So thank you. So welcome, Kristy.
All right, thank you. I mean, 24 years ago, I didn't have student teaching anymore.
Full circle. Continue.
We should have had you up at the beginning, say, you know, two hours later.
Part of the training. Part of the process.
You're here now. Just a little bit of a COVID update. As everybody knows, there's declining cases regionally, and the expectation by the A O E and the Department of Public Works that cases are going to continue to decline through March. So the A O E last week issued guidance that said that they were going to rescind all the previous guidance and recommendations that had been in place for prevention and mitigation as of March 14th, Monday. Why? Because declining case counts and vaccination availabilities are two of the big reasons. So for that, for us, that means, I think most obviously, that the universal masking mandate will be over and masking will be optional. So it's, you can decide to wear a mask or not depending on your own personal preference. That's in the buildings and buses as well. So there was a federal guideline that said you had to wear it at buses, but that also is changing. Another shift is that we have, over the course of the last few months, been the center of testing opportunities, and the, the state gave us tests to give to families. That is still available for the next few weeks anyway, but I think that, that as well is going to shift away from school, being school-focused. And eventually, if families want to do any COVID testing, they'd have to purchase a test from a retail operation. So we do still have a limited supply of tests available. Every school has them, so if you have COVID cases, COVID symptoms, and you're interested in getting a test as a high school student or as a, as a parent of a younger student, you can get a test from a school. I will say the pandemic's not over, so we're asking people, if you're sick or if you're showing symptoms, please make sure you stay home. But it looks like we're starting to come to maybe a little bit of a conclusion of this, at least I hope. I'd like to thank then all the staff, the, the families, the students, and our community for supporting us over the last two years. We, it has been a long haul, especially during, during the period of Delta and Omicron, very challenging for everybody in the, in the schools. So we are happy to move away from that and, and focus on getting back to education, an education focus. I would like to thank, or I would like to congratulate the athletes of our schools for a successful winter season. I especially wanted to congratulate the cheerleaders, who were Vermont State Champions this year. That's another great accomplishment, again. And as was just mentioned, I want to wish well the boys varsity basketball team that will be playing Thursday at UVM. So good luck to them. I think it has been mentioned, some of the end-of-the-year ceremonies and events that are happening, we, I don't know if Greg mentioned this or not, but we have graduations scheduled for June 16th on a Thursday night, June 16th. We decided to have graduation this year. There you go. We're thinking this is all going to be in person, all our end-of-the-year events will be in person, provided there's no change in either the virus or, or in any of the guidance. I think we should be okay with that. So Greg and that team, they're planning a prom, I think was mentioned tonight, the Global Issues Network Conference, that, that also in person, Global Society of STEM Fair in person, all those end-of-the-year events that happen in all our schools, we think we should be okay by, by the end of the year. Lauren mentioned the GIN Conference, and Drew Pearson, very happy to have him back. He is a great alumnus of Rutland High School. Soup Bowls for Hunger is back. That has shifted a little bit than it had been pre-pandemic. They are, they are going to have a drive-through service for soup bowls. So you're, you can get on a website called soupbowsrutland.org, soupbowsrutland.org, and you can order your soup. You're going to drive up to the high school, and they'll deliver it to you right there, and you can take it home to have. And that is a fundraiser for the food shelves all around the county. So glad to have that back too. Last night, I was fortunate to see the R H S and R M S bands at the high school. So we're coming back to in-person arts opportunities. This month, there's a number of opportunities for our community to visit. So last night, we heard the bands. Next week, orchestra, encore theater, and the vocal groups are performing the week after that. And all through the month, the Chaffey Art Center has student artwork on display. All of those events are listed on the district website, if you're looking for dates. We mentioned tonight that we have parent-teacher conferences next week, March 17th and March 18th, so we're encouraging parents and guardians to check in with teachers. And just a couple short highlights with the legislature. I think that at the end of this meeting, we're going to talk a little bit about the people waiting legislation that's in progress, that's still progressing along. I'll mention a couple other bills. There's a bill that's progressing that would address state employee, state municipal and teacher retirement systems. That's in action. There's a bill that's addressing the shortage of educators in the state by possibly allowing some retirees to come back to work for, to schools temporarily. That delayed all early. Without consequences, so that, that would be good. I'm not sure if that's going to pass or not, but that's, that's trying to address the teacher shortage that's happening right now. There's also another bill that's out there that might allow teachers to breach contracts for the next school year up to June 15th without consequences. Currently, if a teacher is, signs up for the next year, there's a certain date that they have to sign up by, we allow some extensions for those contracts. This would put that into place by law. We'll see if that happens. And the last bill I would mention is, there's a bill out there that is talking about requiring school boards to adopt a local policy that would prohibit mascots and other school branding that directly or indirectly references or stereotypes, the likeness, features, symbols, traditions, or other characteristics that are specific to a protected class or the repression of others. That's Senate 139. So that also is being considered right now. So that is it for Superintendent's Report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Olson. Building Committee.
So we met on March 2nd, and we talked about several different things, but one of, kind of like our focus, one of, at that point, was the, it was a water issue at the middle school, which has since been resolved. And Chair Solza had, excuse me, we had recognized the Department of Public Works and the Fire Department for their assistance in all the help that they helped with our grounds crew, and I want to again thank them for that. We talked about the Green Schools Initiative, a lot of in regards to like the basins and standing waters, Esro Project updates, and we talked about PCT, PC, P C B, testing updates, and just some building projects for, that had happened during February and will continue to happen, some projects in April. There's, if anybody has any particular questions in regards to these non-board members, that we all got like the information that Glenn gave in our packet, I know he would, you know, definitely answer any community questions or board questions in regards to all of that further. And that is that for now. Thank you.
Policy Committee. We met on the 15th of February. To be perfectly honest, we spent an hour going round and round and round in circles about our policy on the board's involvement in abolishing a position, and we didn't come to a solution, so we don't have anything to vote on today. We'll get to that the next time, and we'll probably be looking at some revision of, of the policy of how meetings happen at the beginning, after elections, and how many people come in and that sort of stuff.
All right. Good idea. Yep. Finance.
So we had a meeting on March 2nd, and I feel kind of weird giving the outcome of it when we had the man of finance sitting right here. We did talk a lot about, a lot of things that happened lately, so maybe Ted, I don't, I'm going to let you.
He's not comfortable there. You made him get out.
He's the man, so as I get it, ooh, of course it's not.
Glad to have you come. Thanks very much. I try and keep it in the middle. So probably one of the main topics that we discussed with the Finance Committee last Wednesday were the changes that were made to our payroll system to update for new salaries that were agreed to by the board with R E A for teachers, nurses, and education support professionals. That act these changes involve about 400, or about 80% of the district's full-time employees, and there are quite a few complexities involved, so we're taking it step by step, doing as methodically and carefully as we can. The plan is that employees are going to receive a one-time lump sum payment for the retroactive difference between the salaries that have been paid since July 1st of 2021 and the salary rates and the pay rates that were agreed to in January. So in the process of calculating the compensation, that will be provided in a lump sum payment at the same time as the salary changes to the re-contractual effect. Because of the amount of work involved, the business office is planning to implement the changes in two, on two different dates. This coming Friday, March 11. The plan is to implement the changes for education support professionals, E S P, both the lump sum and the salary rate. And then if everything goes smoothly according to our plans, then two weeks hence on the next payroll run, Friday, March 25, then we will implement similar changes for the teachers and nurses. If we do run into any technical issues that cause us to delay, we fully anticipate that we'll be able to resolve those in time to make all payments no later than during the month of April. And another topic that we discussed was that of the financial auditor for the district's financial statements. O'Brien Shorgold Reynolds, a longtime auditor for the district's financials, has decided not to renew its annual engagement. And we are in the process of developing a request for proposal, what we refer to oftentimes as an R F P, to go out and solicit bids probably from about a dozen firms, a dozen on-prem across the state. We are going to include in our solicitation bids from companies that do other school districts and supervisory unions, in some cases have many clients in that regard. We're going to invite Sullivan Powers, who audits the municipality's financial statements, to consider offering a bid. Mary Markowski, the city treasurer is very satisfied with their services and their expert nonprofits, so we'll include them. And, and a number of other logical candidates. So we'll probably be reviewing that with the Finance Committee at its next meeting in early April, with the intent of pulling out with the R F P in April. I might point out that our certified or our audited financial statements have to be completed and submitted to the Federal Audit Clearing House by September 30 of this year, so that's obviously driving the timeline a lot. The final topic that I've mentioned is, in terms of our school buses, we are looking at the economics of potentially leasing to purchase, the acquisition of the two buses that were budgeted for this year, but as some of you may know, due to supply chain and other issues, those two buses are not going to be available for delivery until August of this year, which is of course the new fiscal year. So either way, that purchase or lease to purchase won't affect the 22 financials, and Mr. Scott, the director of the facilities and buildings and transportation, has $200,000 in his budget for this year that we will be able to use for other purposes, such as potentially a roof renovation that is important to do. So as well as other activities, which of course he'll be reviewing in the upcoming debate. So with that, I'll just ask if there are any questions or suggestions on those topics.
So what he said. Good job.
Thank you, sir.
Did I?
Thank you very much. Appreciate the time.
Everything he said.
So this is you all in person again, Abby Burdowski, the recovery coordinator, so lately we have spent a lot of energy talking about big recovery construction projects we're working on for the district, but it's important to, that you're also aware of the incredible work our teachers and staff are doing to support the academic needs of students during this time. So students who missed continuous learning at any point during the pandemic are different learners now, and every teacher is stretching their professional capacity to connect with and impact a wider range of students within their classroom than what they were used to do before. This work we do as a community and a school system to gather in tandem for our students who missed parts of their education is continuous and will last throughout this generation. So let me give you a few examples of other stuff we've been learning. Tutoring is again underway for, for students from kindergarten through senior year to ensure that they, like my own children, who actually had 11 total quarantines and missed whole learning due to absences, are able to connect with qualified teachers as they make up their lost time. This February break, you heard that Rutland Middle School students who needed additional connection and support came to school, where they were cared for by dedicated staff and made progress in their academics. Rutland High School's community school has a full learning experience after regular school hours, and that's another incredible example of the ingenuity and flexibility of our schools to meet students where they are now. Every single teacher in this school district is articulating the standards that they need to teach and creating the scales that communicate what students should know and how they would be assessed for what they know. This huge effort is led by Lorraine Bargman Metz, Susan Hackett, and Dana Johnson, our coaches, and is one that helps us stabilize our entire system, so that teaching teams at any level can eventually create units of study together that account for this wider range of student learners. We call this horizontal alignment. We're trying to make really strong teacher teams so that students get the same content at every level, and we're more efficient when we do that, and we're stronger. And it also enables teachers at key transition points to more clearly communicate what their students have learned to do for the next grade up. And we call this vertical alignment. We want kindergarten through 12th grade to be a smooth path. And so when we do both of these things, we strengthen our system, and that's a huge part of recovery. This work is powerful because teachers are really good at it, and students benefit from it immensely over time. So recovery is an effort that is really just getting started and will define our work for the next 10 years or more. And this is who we are now. It is important for us to recognize that. I'm excited to welcome you board members to say goodbye to some of you that hopefully I'll be seeing when we're out in coffee shops. And we want to make sure we're working together as a collective team, together to do this work. So thank you, and let me know if you have any questions.
Questions? Okay. Thank you. Wait.
Thank you, Abby. Ted.
As you probably know, there are several members of this board, including Allison Catty and Ann, who are active participants in the Coalition for the National Student Association, have made important contributions to those advocacy efforts. I'm also involved on the administrative staff to help with some of the coordination. And I'm pleased to be able to say that recently, in the legislature, the Senate Finance Committee has drafted a bill to implement a version, and I stress a version, of the UVM waiting study with its For example, the current proposal includes three policy changes from the original study's recommendations. Why does that matter? Well, one of them involves how poverty would be measured and how poverty would be translated into the metrics for equivalent pupils. And the policy change that's been adopted in this legislation, driven by task force members as well as the Senate Finance Committee, would water down or deroot the impact of those changes relative to what the 2019 study recommended. So there's an example of, well, we're moving steps in the right direction. Would be beneficial, as far as we're concerned, to implement the U V M recommendation straight up as proposed, but again, you don't always get everything that you're asking for, and the legislation will likely involve this and some other policy changes. Another interesting aspect is there's been a great debate about whether to use weighting factors or something that is, in my opinion, misleadingly labeled a cost equity formula. It's basically a categorical aid formula that has little if anything to do with equity. It may involve equality simply because it seeks to provide an average dollar per pupil, whatever that dollar costs across the state. But at any rate, the good news is the task force report originally included recommendations for both weights and the so-called cost equity formula. We're moving away from the latter, but there could be a hybrid version whereby weights are implemented. And then to address concerns on the part of some legislators that that might not adequately provide for small English language learner programs, the weights could be supplemented by additional categorical aid programs. So, you know, in the overall scheme of things, as long as the weights are implemented in large measure, if the legislature determines that it's beneficial in the general interest of remonders, to add some supplemental aid, I don't know that many people are going to disagree with that. Next week, I believe it is, on March 18th, is what's called crossover, when this legislation from the finance committee has to move over to the House in order to continue to progress through this legislative session. We anticipate that that will occur on a timely basis. Then deliberations in the Senate and the House could continue for the rest of the session. It needs to be considered both by the House Ways and Means Committee, as well as by the Senate Education Committee and Finance Committee. So you basically have four committees that are involved in all of it. Good news is that the Coalition for Vermont Student Equity continues to gain new members and contributions. Most recently, Montpelier Roxbury voted to join the coalition, and that was, that was an important addition to our membership, given the size and the influence of that district and system. I will add that the coalition could benefit from additional funding from both new members as well as founding members, such as Rutland City Public Schools, who have been there very consistently over the course of the past year. And one thing that, you know, I would recommend for the board to consider at some point is there's no question that Rutland City Public Schools, being one of the leaders in this organization, and one of the larger school districts, and one of the districts that stands to potentially benefit most, might consider supporting the coalition with the equivalent of, say, a month's worth of operating expenses. And that typically runs in the neighborhood of about $4,500 for various consulting, marketing, and other fees. I know that's a lot of money. Our two past contributions have been $3,000 each, and I'm sure that the coalition would welcome an additional contribution in the $3,000 range, which would bring our cumulative total to nine or 10 or 10.5. There are other districts and supervisory unions that have also contributed in the $10,000 range or higher. Those tend to be districts like our own, more prominent, larger, more involved in the activities. But the purpose of this is to recognize that the majority of all this advocacy work is done by our three board members and their counterparts in other school boards that are doing it on a voluntary basis. The purpose of some of these expenditures for consulting services is to focus, it's to leverage, and to supplement to some extent the largely volunteer efforts of the coalition. One final comment, the next logical question would be to ask, well, Ted, if you're recommending that this board consider an additional four and a half, three, $5,000 contribution, where did that money come from? I mean, do we have it? It wasn't in the original budget. And one thing that I looked into from your consideration is the fact that during the month of February, the district is saving probably in the range of about $80,000 versus the budget, because our actual full-time equivalent employees continues to run well below the number for which we had budgeted this year. We had budgeted 501 full-time employees. You might recall a graph that we had looked at during the budget reviews, which showed that after budgeting for 501, we ended the fiscal year '21 in June of last year at about 483 employees because of attrition, retirements, and the challenging labor market making it more difficult to replace those positions. By December of this year, we were down to 479 full-time employees versus the budget of 501, and this past month, we were still at 477. So what I did in offering the $80,000 estimate for you is to just do some high-level calculations to say, well, every month that the district runs about 20 F T Ps below the budgeted amount, we'll save approximately how much depending upon the year. So that's a good news story overall. The superintendent, the assistant superintendent of the board will obviously get to decide over time how it wants to spend that money. There are other cost increases naturally, but my recommendation would be to consider making a third contribution to the coalition with a modest sum from part of that money because it'll give you a very high return on investment if the things continue to go in this direction. Nothing is assured. While we've made wonderful progress, all it takes are one or two legislative surprises, and this could all go in a totally different direction. We've certainly been surprised before. So with that, may I invite potentially a comment from some of our board members who have participated? Or, oh, that's not my job. I apologize.
I'd like to make, I'd like to entertain a motion to contribute $4,500 additional funding.
I'll second.
Okay. Now I want to read the motion on the table. Can we have questions? Start with Stephanie.
Allison, you can go first.
Okay.
So yeah, I just wanted to add a little bit. I asked to have this on the agenda, so I appreciate Ted presenting, but so as Ted mentioned, some of the concerns, one of the biggest things that's going to impact our district and why we need to stay on top of this, and although it's moving along, it's not something we can lose sight of, is the change in the poverty metric. So they, one of their policy changes was to go with free and reduced lunch, and as we all know, we have not been collecting that data for years because we have such a high poverty level. We have been, we have been doing universal meals for several years now. So that is a big concern for us, and that is what Ted alluded to with the watering down, the poverty rate, so that those of us that are really in many districts in our shoes don't have the data to support, whereas some, it may not actually be very equitable because they have that data. And in the plan, they want to use free and reduced lunch and then move to universal income form, whether or not that's going to be possible is another question. And, you know, one of the simple facts is we heard people today complaining or mentioning the per pupil dollar amount that our schools are spending, and our per pupil dollar amount is based on weighted number of pupils. And the importance of the weighting study is for the past 25 years, we have been so-called underweighted, or we have students that have much higher needs, and it's been proven that they are much more costly to educate. And that is what the weighting would do, would take into account for that so that we are able to provide some more support services, have more of our slice of the pie from the state ed fund, and not have to stretch our resources so thin to get by. So, you know, that's, that's certainly an important thing, and I think we've heard many issues about it tonight from the public and from our teachers and the things that we are doing. And, you know, I think simply the fact that we had these challenges, COVID exacerbated those discrepancies and disparities, and this is certainly a very important way that our school system could benefit from extra dollars to support our kids and our teachers. So I fully support.
Okay. Thank you, Allison. Stephanie?
Thank you. I figured you'd give more insight to him because I was being on the committee. My, so you kind of alluded to something, and so this is be the third time, well, yeah, the third time that we're asked to vote, to give money to this study, and I think that it's overall, you know, will definitely help our district. But you talked about the volunteers, but then the way you made it, who exactly, who exactly is the money going to? Because the way you said it, it was like they're volunteering, but they're getting the money. So like, and I, like-
Yes, you'd like to clarify that. And by the way, it's not a donation for the study, it's a donation to the coalition, which is organizing all the advocacy effort. And so basically, the coalition engages some professional consulting services, both in terms of advocacy and in terms of communications. And that's roughly in the $4,000 per month range, depending upon how much of those services we use in a given month. Sometimes we'll do more communications, sometimes we'll do less. So that's basically to cover that, as well as some incidentals, such as when we do marketing. And what I wanted, what I was trying to suggest is that, you know, that use of those types of professional services is something that leverages the volunteer efforts that put in, we have, Allison, I can't remember, approximately, is it, is it about 25 or 26 members now that the coalition has? I know it's increasing.
Yeah, I think it's just below 30 district, well, districts, supervisory unions, or schools.
Right. So of each of those 25 to 30 districts and supervisory unions, each provides some number of volunteers. Many of us are out there speaking to legislators, doing other types of advocacy work, doing research, writing, that sort of thing. But the benefit of being able to engage the consultant is to have a professional perspective to say, you know what, based upon my knowledge of the legislative process, I think you should focus your efforts right now in this direction, or I think you should do more of that, or have you considered communicating with the Senate Education Committee at this time? You know, people like Allison, for example, who I know, and perhaps Kathy and Ann, but I know Allison, which is very knowledgeable about what's going on in the legislature, but most of us are not. And so having a professional who knows the personalities and how to help navigate it gets more out of our volunteer efforts is the point that I was trying to make.
So my second half of my question was, so this would is the third time that you're coming to us asking for money or to help fund this project. Are, is it the coalition saying to you guys, go back to your district and ask for it? Or is, or is this something you, as a part of the coalition, is coming to us and saying? And if the coalition is asking for it, but in reality, how many districts have, so you had the initial that Allison asked us for, and then there was the second time, and now the third time? How, I mean, you may not be able to give me this number, but I would like it for, you know, if you, so the initial, did all of the districts involved in this give the initial? Did get initial money, and then the second time, and now we're asking the third time?
Sure. So I understand the nature of your question. The way I'm, the way I'm hearing the nature of your question is, is along the lines of, is everybody kind of doing their part?
Like, are we going to continue to add money? Like, how many other districts are continuing to help fund this project? Because I don't think, you know, we as a district need to continue, while I agree, but I don't think we should be the only ones continuing to, so which I can't imagine that we're not the only ones who are giving money each time, but is there some, I mean, you guys may not even have that data. I don't know.
I have some of the data because I have, as a, trying to be responsible from a fiduciary standpoint, before coming to the committee and before speaking with Allison and others, I did naturally look into that. Because you want to have some assurance that most people are paying however you might define as their fair share. And of course, there are different pay sides. So the short answer to your question is, there are many districts that are actively volunteering, and there are a good number that are not providing direct financial support. To be a little bit more clear, there are many who have made pledges, not 100% of the ones who have made pledges so far have, you know, made those contributions. Sometimes there's timing with fiscal years. Okay, I can make you a pledge, but I can't budget the money and provide it to you until July 1st, when I have it in my budget for the mid-fiscal year. The way I would characterize it for you, Stephanie, is to say that the majority of the larger districts, and I consider ourselves one of those larger leading districts, who definitely have a lot to gain, and we have quite a bit to gain in this district for reasons we've discussed, are providing very significant financial support, some more than what we have done or would do if we do this third tranche. There's another aspect of the question that I do want to address as well, because if I were in your position, I would be saying, well, why the heck are you coming back to me for a third time for this? Why didn't you just ask me for the money upfront? And the reason is, from my standpoint, because we really didn't know. We didn't know how long this would be going on. And initially, when Allison and I and others came forward and asked for a $3,000 sort of down payment or deposit, we didn't know if we'd have any success or whether this thing would be shut down. And then fortunately, through some hard work and some smart work, and communicating effectively with some of the right people, I suppose, we got through the last legislative, the first half of the session, we went into the fall, and we were getting some traction. And the task force was going off in a bunch of directions that some of us thought were, you know, not the right way at all. So we continued our involvement activities, which cost money, so we came back for a second tranche, as you said. And now that we have made it into this second half of the legislative session, and we know for sure that our involvement will be required through at least this legislative session, we may be pleasantly surprised that we come to a conclusion in April, but the coalition has a certain number of months of funding available to it at every given time. I'd rather not get into those specifics, but it would be beneficial if a number of districts, such as ourselves and others who are looking at similar action, can now renew to make sure that our efforts can continue at least over the next several months. And then frankly, if it were to go a little bit further, or if there was another purpose to keep in mind, we might come back and discuss it once again. You don't want to ask for too much pre-investment, just enough to kind of stay ahead of where we're going. So I would be glad to provide more details at some point if you'd like to see if it's available. I don't know to what extent it can be released, but I can tell you that there are other districts that are providing much more financial support than we are, and they have even more to gain than we do, even though their resources are stretched. So we're not out there by ourselves, would be a good way to describe it. And that's probably the best I can do. I'm not asking you to spend your money without other-
Trish, over to Allison.
Just one, one thing that I like to throw out there is it would be nice for, you know, I understand you're getting these consultants, but to have something tangible, the group itself should really be tracking this and having something to submit to these, these districts that are involved in wanting to support this, because I feel much better contributing knowing who is this consultant I'm paying. You know, right now, it's a phantom consultant to me. I would like to see tangible people that are getting-
Just one, one thing that I like to throw out there is it would be nice for, you know, I understand you're getting these consultants, but to have something tangible, the group itself should really be tracking this and having something to submit to these, these districts that are involved in wanting to support this, because I feel much better contributing, knowing who is this consultant I'm paying, you know, right now it's a phantom consultant to me. I would like to see tangible people that are getting, what are they doing for us?
And actually, we meet with that consultant every week on, on the way to the scheduled meetings. The executive director of the Coalition works with that consultant on a daily basis. Some of the board members of the Coalition also work with that consultant many times per week, you know, to, to provide my opinion on that, and I agree with you 100%. And because it's a, it's a nonprofit corporation, those records are kept and they are available, and I can look into how much of that can be disclosed publicly. But we're actually getting more than our value from this particular consulting resource because this person is really invested in wanting this principle to work. So frankly, and we've talked about it with this person, but, you know, they're, they're charging us the friends and family rate, basically. So giving them a lot of time to dedicate it. Allison, we're closer to that than I am. Do you want to reiterate that or agree?
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to highlight, I mean, I think a couple of things that might answer both questions. So the Coalition is a nonprofit. The only person getting any paycheck is the agency that we have hired, and they provide the oversight, the lobbying, oversight of the legislation and what's going on, the lobbying and the communications. So right now, it, well, right now, it's about to go out of the Senate, but previously, it was in three committees simultaneously. Impossible, as a working human sitting on a school board, to know what's going on each day. So a representative from that agency is in the State House every day, and they are watching what's going on with those committees, and they are making the connections that need to be made and alerting us when things are shifting. So that is the only, that's where the money is being spent. So, and as Ted mentioned, we are getting a nonprofit rate for that, and that is half, half, half the rate. So one, and who they work for, but primarily one person representing them, and other people do different pieces of it. Patricia's question, there is a website, and anyone on our school board here has been invited to join the Coalition meetings, and there's an email list. So you can just go on Coalition for Vermont Student Equity's website, and I can send it to you if interested, and the link, and sign up for the email, and you will get the weekly updates of exactly what our money is getting us.
And by the way, the website was designed by a volunteer.
Yes. And the executive director that was mentioned, that's a volunteer. That's a underpaid, hard-working school board member from Dover. So, and what our money is getting us, there's updates on there on what we've been able to do. Just over a year ago, I met with Senate Pro Tem, and she said, there's just absolutely no way they can possibly take anything to do with this up. And then we got a bill out for the task force, and then the task force met all summer. So it evolved, like Ted said, the, last year was for that legislative session, then the task force came. So that was more lobbying and effort that had to be done when the legislature wasn't in session that you wouldn't anticipate because the task force met outside of there. And certainly now with all the balls jumping around, it's, it's certainly getting our money's worth for what is coming, and the Coalition is a 504(c)(3), so they do follow all the, the reporting and processing standards. But certainly, yeah, if anyone is interested, I could send the link, and you can just sign up for the email list, and you will get a weekly update.
And join, and join our weekly meetings, we welcome your support.
Charlene, and then I think we'll take a vote. Charlene?
So how does that work as far as, so that the Coalition at some point gets depleted, and they kind of make a request? So is everybody contributing at the same time, or is it kind of staggered? Like, I think you said something like it was $4,000 a month to maybe keep going or something, and if we have a request for that amount, that's going to buy us a month's worth of time? But, yeah, if everybody else is contributing as well, that's going to strip, is that all thinking right, or is that-
If you need 12 people to contribute a month, and then, you know, you'd have your own rate set, but that's not what's going to happen. When people have contributed-
That's going to kill us, obviously, more than a month because we have other people-
Oh, well, yeah.
So, I mean, our overall spending, if we invest this additional amount, will put us in line with other districts our size. So there are some districts, as Ted said, there are some really small districts that have contributed a lot. There are some other larger districts that are not financially able to contribute as much. So it's really just a balancing act. There's no, there's no dues, there's no, this person has to pay that because obviously we're fighting for equity, and we're fighting against schools that have been underfunded for 25 years. So, you know, it's, it's, there's not a set amount because we did not want that to be a barrier for people's participation. And Ted alluded to the number of participants, and I believe now it's over 30% of the schools in the state are under the Coalition and supportive.
Well, yes, if you look at the number of students represented-
Yeah.
The number of students is 30% of the total enrollment of Vermont.
Okay. I'd like to call the vote. All those in favor of spending, of contributing $4,500 to the Coalition, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you. I'm going to take a little bit of a prerogative here. I'm going to do the superintendent's review. Where does that stand?
So it's going to be a waiver for COVID. We'll go from there because when I did address Bill, he had not received the results from the previous one, which was done two years ago. And as we know, the past two years have been crazy. And in long term here, it felt like it was a little unfair to evaluate somebody who's really stuck it all through thick and thin. However, I did recommend that he does, the superintendent, excuse me, evaluation has been redone, sharing a copy of it for the new board. So for the new board, I would suggest that the evaluation is done at the beginning of each year, and then again at the end of the year. But I really think that Bill sticking it out and being here, you know, he passed the evaluation. So that's what that stands.
She has that copy?
She does, yes.
All right. Setting the date for the next board meeting?
Is already set. It's October 12th.
You're looking yet?
I would like to make a motion that we set a date for the next board meeting because we've, when we went two and a half years ago, Dick Corcel and David Locke, we went to, from meeting twice a month to meeting only the first Tuesday of every month, with the fourth reserved. And so the way our city charter works, it says that the school board cannot, the new members, the new re-elected officials cannot be sworn in until the 15th. So that leaves us with, from Election Day till our next meeting, six weeks. And after March 15th, we have four board members that are no longer board members, and we have other members that may be sworn in, but would not be because we wouldn't be meeting. So-
What are you proposing for a date, Allison?
So, and then, you know, as Kevin mentioned, referring it to policy, because it's in our policy, so we will need to fix it, otherwise there'll be this problem every year.
Right, and we can call a meeting.
So.
I actually want to propose, though, that we do twice-a-month meetings because I think that the once-a-month is better.
That's something, that's something that we could discuss. Yeah.
So, I mean, I guess I make a motion, we could do it on the 15th, which would be next Tuesday. Or 22nd, which would be the fourth Tuesday. I don't know if we have other committees that are already scheduled then.
You could make it. Do we have anything on the 22nd? Because we do have a policy meeting at 4:30.
We could do, you could do-
I don't see anything on the 22nd.
You could certainly do it on the 22nd. The board meeting is for reorganization.
Exactly.
Okay, so.
I, I don't know if, I don't know if we really need to do that prior to 30 days. I feel like the superintendent and administration can handle the district.
I'm going to agree with Allison on this one because it took, you know, you're, especially in this regard, that we have four members going out, and I, I mean, I, something I would never think of in your business is to have two meetings a month on, but I agree with Allison, I think we should go with the 22nd, which is two weeks from tonight.
All right. So do I, can I get a motion for a board meeting?
Slowed.
Okay, just say the motion, please.
I make a motion, should I include the date?
Yes.
To have a special meeting on March 22nd.
Actually, a regular board meeting, a reorganization.
A regular board meeting on the 22nd.
Okay. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
I guess actually we should include it because we need an agenda, and we're not going to have anyone to set the agenda because we'll be in limbo there.
It's a party.
So just that it's the reorganization meeting.
Yeah, we'll do the reorganization meeting. Yes. Yep. Very much so. Thank you. Okay. So speaking of us leaving, and we're not leaving this yet because we haven't an executive session yet, because I promised you it's going to be, no, just kidding. I'd like to take a minute to say a few words. I want to start with Ann. Thank you, Ann, for your, your service, for making me think sometimes out the bar, outside the box, which I need to. You and I have had some great conversations. And thank you for your dedication to the district, and we hope that you will continue dedicated service someplace else within this district, or maybe even come back in the future. But thank you so much for your time on the board. Nina, what can I say? Challenges, no, just kidding. Thank you for your service, and thank you for your devotion and desire to do negotiations. We know that you loved it.
Yes.
And worked diligently for this community, and for all the teachers and the board and everything else. And we certainly appreciate everything that you've done. And again, I echo the same thing I said about Ann. I hope you continue your service within this community and see you sometime back on this board. Thank you so much. And what can I say? It's been a long, quite 13 years. We have, we have been together and gone through, I think we're a little too left, right? I think Allison came after us, but I think it's you and I.
No, God.
God, it's time that we settle off of this. Thank you for your dedication. Thank you for your time and effort that you put in with this district. And hopefully we'll see you around. I know we will.
Yes. Not on the board.
Not on the board, okay? Well, thank you so much for everything.
Thank you.
Back to you, Harley. For real, you have been a large contributor in the education world between your teaching and your time in union, CFCs wherever you were there, and your time here at the school board. So dedication to the community, education, has not gone unseen, I think, by many. So thank you, and best of luck in your next ventures.
Thank you so much.
I too would like to say thank you to you all. I get to witness the many, many hours that you've put into all the different committee work and just sitting, sitting here every, every month. It's a huge amount of work. I don't think the community at all realizes how much, how much time you put into this and how much thoughtfulness you put into this. So I appreciate that. I think Ellie Davenport said it really well, that your, your commitment to this district and the betterment of the schools is, it's, it's true and it's sincere, and we appreciate that. So thank you from, from the staff and from the school community. Thank you.
Now, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing school security measures and confidential attorney-client communications. The premature release of information regarding these subjects would place the board at its front of this building, including Bill Olson, Rob Bliss, Terrell Lemmons, Patricia Alver, and Don Laswell. That is a move. I'll hear it. Yay, winner. Busting gates.